The next item that is in your packet is the updated summary sheet of all three funds. And then the other thing that is on your desk is a consolidation of all the questions and answers that were asked of all the departments, update of the fiscal year 2020 budget proposal. Do you have any questions so far? We're going to dive right into our summaries. We're going to start off with enterprise fund and then work towards general funds. So in our enterprise fund, start with the Department of Utility Billings. So do you have any questions?
Madam Mayor, Council, our approach is like we've done in years past. We'll go department by department. As Jenny stated, we'll start with the enterprise fund. You guys have asked the questions. We've answered the questions. We want to now allow you the opportunity to dialogue amongst yourselves or with us. You have all the directors here at the table. You have their support staff behind as well. Just like we've done in years past, we'll start at the top with enterprise fund, utility billing. What we're asking for is you guys to give us direction if there's any outstanding questions for each department as we go through them, be it the summary of questions that we provided you or anything that's still outstanding. This is an opportunity for you to dialogue amongst yourselves and us. As Jenny stated, as we go through each department and we'll answer any questions for you, we would like to consider those departments balanced at that point and closed. Again, if you do think of something later on in the day, we can always bring it back. But our kind of goal, like we've always done in the past, is just go department by department, answer any questions, dialogue, and then we'll consider that department somewhat closed. So then by the end of the day, we'll have what we'll call the tentative balanced budget for fiscal 2020. So with that, as Jenny mentioned, we would like to start off with the enterprise fund. We'd like to start off at the top, which is the utility billing department. And open the questions to you guys. If you have any questions on utility billing, this is the opportunity to discuss them. Again, enterprise fund first, so to line you up, it'll be utility billing, public works, water, wastewater. Then we'll go to community development. And then we'll finish the day off with the general fund going, starting with the admin department and so forth, like we've done in the past. So again, just want to kind of give you guys an idea of our approach. You have your team here. So with that, as Jenny stated, utility billing, any outstanding questions that you would like answered at this time for utility billing?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Not a question, but a comment, as we kind of delve into this part of the process. It was, and I assume you're the lead on this, extremely helpful to have compiled questions that came in in advance of today's discussion, provided these responses on all of these topics. It's going to speed it up a lot, and it also gives us some time to consider if there's any other follow-up questions. So thank you for putting this together. Extremely helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Borton.
And Madam Mayor, the reason I bring it up is there are some questions in here in utility billing that have been answered. I don't have any questions further from up there.
I appreciate that, Joe. That's where you're going is where we want to go. And we've done our best to answer all the questions that you've submitted to us. If there's any outstanding questions or if you want to readdress any questions, we're here for you. So I appreciate that, Joe.
Here we don't have any questions with MUDS. Let's move to public works department.
May Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
A quick question for Dale to respond to. Each year I ask a similar question about depreciation reserves. And we've met outside of the budget process to talk about the fact that that is being addressed very proactively. And I think later this summer or this fall, we're going to be hearing some updates on how depreciation is accounted for and doesn't necessitate the question that's to be asked. You're on topic. So I didn't know if you can give us a quick snapshot of what's coming in that regard.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton. We've just recently completed an assessment of the utility infrastructures, both water and wastewater, particularly focusing on underground utilities. And we do plan to bring that back to the council and give an opportunity for council to see just exactly what that structure looks like in terms of age, materials, conditions, and an opportunity to look out and, I guess, think a little bit about the 100-year time horizon and some of the challenges that faces the city as that infrastructure ages. We currently have between $2 and $3 million that we're investing annually, and that's reflected in your budgets through mainline replacements for both water and sewer. We also take care of some of that in our mainline water and sewer extension accounts. So it's not like it's not being invested on on a continuous basis. But as you will see, at some point in the time, the city's going to have to increase that investment in preparation for continually aging infrastructure. So if you'll hold that, we'll come back in the fall. As I mentioned, the actual assessment report portion of that is complete, and we'll bring that to you so you can be better educated on exactly what's under our feet and in the ground throughout the city. The, I guess, assessment suggests that our city is young and our infrastructure is in very good shape. So we do not anticipate certainly facing any of the kinds of challenges that you're hearing about for those cities across the country that have had infrastructure in the ground for 100 to 120 years already. The bulk of our infrastructure is quite young and of modern materials, so.
Awesome. Thanks, Dale. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Any other questions?
Okay. Okay. Let's move to water department. Any questions within the water department? About wastewater.
Mr. Cavanagh.
And this may be, I think, just beneficial for a couple of the other departments we're going to touch on today. I'm hoping to get just a better understanding about our approach to the vehicle replacement asset forms or assessment forms and some of the methodology behind that. I'm not sure who the lead is on that, but I had, I think, various questions about vehicle replacements in multiple departments. Rather than ask that same question overall, it doesn't have to be right now. It can be at a later point in time, but I guess then I may want to come back and talk about the vehicle replacements in wastewater.
I think it's certainly relevant to do it now, talk about the policy that was adopted a couple of years ago and trying to stem the question of what vehicle to replace. So we did have a third-party assessment that was required from each department and any vehicles they wanted to replace, had to go through the evaluation by this third party, I believe it's Meridian Automotive.
Yep.
And if it hits a certain point, then it is deemed that it's on the replacement list. So if it is on your list, it has met the criteria to be replaced per the policy.
So, Madam Mayor, then is this even a discussion for the council or is it believed that it's automatically going to be replaced?
It's pretty much, we decided to develop the policy so we didn't have these conversations each year. And it was important to have it through that third party that we accept their recommendation that this should be replaced.
Sure. Madam Mayor, and I appreciate that. I do struggle with that we're choosing to replace vehicles that are listed in the condition of good. To me seems maybe not the right decision. I understand the intent of the policy, but I guess our role as council is to maybe review that. And so I understand that there is a vehicle that's here that's set to be replaced that is listed as good, and maybe some better understanding as to the why.
Okay, I'm going to defer that to Mr. La Boy.
We're starting in, I think, recent.
Appreciate the question, Luke. So like the mayor stated, we created this form to create a structured approach to our vehicle replacements. The good is one aspect of your scoring sheet. The ultimate decision is going to be by the executive branch to propose to you. We do have an opportunity that every director has an opinion or a non-numerical approach to it, to still consider or not consider the document or a vehicle to be proposed to you for consideration based on their opinions. The form itself is a mathematical approach. It's a tool that we use to give us the simple answer of these automatically get in and these should be replaced. If it does come in with a scoring sheet of good, we do allow the director to argue that and make a, I guess, a non-mathematical argument to why it should be replaced. Is that...
Sure.
So we do have the gray area for the director to have a final say that, yes, the form says what it says, but the director says this is why we need to replace it because numerically still doesn't work because we have a safety issue. Because it can't take into every consideration. It gives us a good basis. So if that answers, hopefully that answers it.
Madam Mayor, I think that's helpful, yes. I guess then that would come back to discussion about each one then, and I guess I'm looking forward to the information as to why number, I don't even know how we've numbered these. The GMC Sierra 1500 listed as good. Again, the biggest contributor to its score is the age of the vehicle. The vehicle use type is a low score. The condition of the vehicle is low. It appears there's some preventive maintenance, general repair. Just trying to get an understanding as to why this one is listed.
Was not to be replaced?
Is listed.
Okay, got it. So it's a fair question, and we have your subject matter experts here. So this is the wastewater department?
Yep.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to address that, Madam Mayor and Councilman Cavanagh. So we have two vehicles that are actually on the list. The Meridian Automotive section really looks at kind of a snapshot of current condition. From an operability and safety standpoint, where we have a concern with this particular vehicle is that this is our primary single emergency response collections vehicle. It's driven by the supervisor over the collections team. It has gone through pretty significant repairs recently. We still have check engine lights and all kinds of things that are on there. It's identified to have between $1,000 and $2,000 maintenance. We just spent that on it. It has a salvage value of about $1,000. So we have to kind of impart, you know, some common sense on whether or not we throw good money after bad on these vehicles and consideration for, you know, extending the life from this snapshot, which was here a few months ago, over the course of FY '20. So we don't have any extra vehicles in our fleet. So if something goes down, we're out. And our options are going and renting something that might bridge the gap or whatever. But these vehicles, because they're emergency response, they're full of equipment and supplies and materials. They need the tools and all those kinds of things. So this one in particular has cracking in the bed. Well, the mechanic says, yeah, you can drive it that way. Well, it's showing structural signs of deterioration and things. So we do have to impart some judgment on top of the reports that we get. And that's what's led us to the recommendation that this vehicle has lived its life and warrants a more reliable, updated vehicle.
Do you have any follow-up questions?
Madam Mayor, yes, I do. What was the, do you know ballpark with the cost of the repairs were that we just spent and when those were completed? I recognize that's putting you on the spot, Dale. I'm sorry. It's okay. I'm just, I think that brings up an important piece.
Yeah, we just went through this prompted by your question. So I've got it. Staff has it, and just takes maybe a...
And Joe, Dale, we can always come back with the details, let your team, because we're here all day. Does that work?
Yeah, and I guess maybe, I don't want to circumvent the process, but maybe this is something that we would put on a parking lot for a discussion at a later point in time if council, mayor, directors are amenable to that.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Borton.
Kind of piggybacking on Councilman Cavanagh's questions about the autos. So if a department has a vehicle they think may need to be replaced, they send it to Meridian Automotive and they get a report back. My question is, were requests and vehicles inspected that were then deemed not to be replaced?
Yes.
Yes.
There were several that did not make the replacement list because those conversations were happened.
Okay. The reason I say that is because I also, I recently had a vehicle that I had inspected by a mechanic and was told it needed $4,000 worth of work. Then, this is a car I was selling. I was selling it. The person who was buying it took it to a different mechanic and got a completely different report. And they were satisfied with the condition of the car. Didn't need $4,000 worth of repairs based on their mechanic. So, you know, it's, I don't know if there's ever a situation where it's like kind of on the line, you'd maybe get a second opinion if it's close. And this is nothing against any particular mechanic. I just know that that's how they work a lot of times. Want to fix everything.
If I may, I'm going to answer the first question that Mr. Cavanagh had. So we spent $3,642 just recently.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I apologize. Dale, I apologize. Todd was grabbing me on something. I want to give you my full attention. Todd, if you can give me a second, and Dale, please. Sorry, Madam.
We just got done finished spending $3,642. The mechanic's report here says we need to spend another $1,500. We've got an engine light issue that they're unable to resolve, so we have a mechanical or electrical gremlin in it. We have body structural cracks that the mechanic says is still drivable. We're a little bit more concerned. The mechanic themselves came out and said we need to spend $1,500 more. This truck's worth $1,000 bucks. We did the, it's not the Kelly Blue Book, it's Edmund.
Yeah, Edmund.
Anyway, we did, so it's like, at some point in time, you're just spending money, and we don't think it was appropriate to continue to invest in that, and that's why it's been recommended for replacement. To answer Councilman Mylum's question, we withdrew one, two, three, or excuse me, two vehicles in wastewater and two vehicles in water due to the annual assessment where it was in there, and we pulled them out and we pushed them out. And then we have a fleet of 53 rolling stock vehicles.
Right. Thanks, Dale.
Any other questions? That's a good point, Genesis. I think that that's the conversations. The assessment allows us to have a starting point for those discussions, but then you look at any cost history and driver feedback and those kind of things. It also leads to how they land on the replacement list if they have a good rating. There's nothing further we clutter? Mr. Cavanagh?
Madam Mayor, I guess I need some direction about where we're headed on this. Is this something we want to talk about at a later point in time? Again, I never know how to begin this process. It's always, it changes and it's confusing for me, and I don't want to step on toes. If there are things that a council member says maybe this should not be included in this year's budget, how do you want that addressed? Do you want us to talk about that right here if we take a vote and move on?
I think that's probably the easiest is to vote on those that come up.
So, and again, for council's benefit, I really struggle with the replace vehicles that are in good condition. I know that the scoring matrix, which places as much emphasis on years of age as the condition of the vehicle, is what we use. I know we share that it's pretty much assumed that these are going to be replaced, but I think as council, we have the ability to say, is this appropriate for us to be spending dollars? I, especially where we just spent $4,000 on repairs, to then sell it for $1,000 is another piece that I struggle with. So I'm supportive because of the investment that we've made in the repairs on this vehicle to continue this vehicle for another year. But I also don't want to spend all of our meeting talking about these single things if I'm the only person or if Councilmember Mylum, Councilmember Borton, are the only one person that has that feeling. I go back to last year where we spent like seven hours, and I think we eliminated $1,500 from the budget. That's not a good use of staff's time. That's not a good use of the mayor's time. That's not a good use of taxpayer dollars. So I don't want to repeat that. But I also don't know how to balance that with having the opportunity to address each particular item. And so that's, I guess I'm looking for some more ground rules about how you would want to have us proceed.
I think if there are questions that a council member has concern with, to have a vote and then move on from there.
Okay. So I guess then if you're looking, I'm happy to move that we hold this vehicle that's in good condition for another year.
Okay.
Is that what you're looking for in terms of a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Do you want seconds on that?
If I have a second. Okay, I have a second. Any further discussion?
Sure, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
And broader than just this vehicle, just to give my perspective on this, the end result of today's process is authorizing the publication of a draft budget for public input, to the extent we get any, for an August adoption. With that in mind, the idea, the concept of vehicles, we've addressed a process and developed the policy of this objective scoring criteria, which I'm comfortable with and want to apply. And when it gets to, I mean, that criteria was developed, adopted by us, utilized to try and streamline this process. If any vehicle that we have warrants enough points to be replaced, then we replace it, period. And if it sits on a pivot point and it's that director's discretion and professional judgment to determine that it's appropriate, done, I trust it. I just do. So on a one-off perspective, I probably won't vote today to remove any vehicle out because it's got enough points utilizing the policy that we've adopted to make it objective and not subjective. And then when it's close, it's that director who can articulate, Dale probably gave a good example of what we might hear on every other one from anyone else who's close, that when I hear it, I'm going to say we'll keep it in, from my perspective. So now to your other question about should the vehicle replacement policy be reviewed, maybe updated and adopted, maybe articulate some of the director discretion call points, maybe assign a point value, I think it's a great idea. I don't know if it happens July 8th necessarily. So that's the reason for this request and all the others going forward with regards to the vehicles. The policy has point criteria which warrants its replacement. The director has, tie goes to the director, I guess, on the close calls, so a discussion for the fall on how that policy should be updated at all.
Madam Mayor, if I can respond?
Mr. Cavanagh.
Appreciate the comments. There's something I think that is, I want to either address now or later, and I think everybody feels the same way. Budget day to me feels like finals week in like high school or college. Like nobody's excited. We're all exhausted. We're hopped up on caffeine and grouchiness. And this is like my least favorite day being on the council. Because, it is, because here's why. We, and it goes to your point, which touched about trust and saying that you trust the directors. And that almost, I don't think intended implies that if you're questioning, that we don't trust. And I think that's an important piece for us as council, for me to speak to specifically, is that for me, we get this budget book. I go through it. I ask lots of questions, not because we don't trust our directors or our staff, it's because I'm inquisitive and I want to make sure that I'm doing best to represent our taxpayers. And so I know sometimes my bedside manner, it leaves something to be desired. And it's not that I don't trust or appreciate the expertise that comes from our directors and staff. Rather, it's that I'm trying to do what you have all done over a period of months, is go through this and come to terms with it as subject matter experts. I'm not a subject matter expert, and so I'm going to ask some of these questions, and I am going to wrestle with each of these decisions. And while I trust our leadership, it does not necessarily mean that I will always just go forth with a blanket recommendation. If that were the case, we would just vote this morning to adopt the budget and go home. We're going through this process because we've got questions, concerns, comments. We want to be able to come to terms with what we decide on. So I think the world of Dale. I think you're one of the best directors we have. All our directors are awesome. So it's not that I have issues with what you're bringing forth, it's that I'm just trying to come to terms with the decision that we're being asked to make.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah. I think, so you've got a $14,000 vehicle, one that's brand new. We spent $10,000 in its life. We spent $3,400 last year. The mechanic themselves says we need to spend $1,500 more, and that has nothing to do with the engine light and everything else. So what we have is a deteriorating aging vehicle, and you're placing a lot of pressure on us to try to guess when this thing is going to fail catastrophically or require substantial investment. So if we're going to make, you know, some rules around that, maybe we could get some guidance on, so how much is too much? So I spend $1,500, doesn't take care of it. I spend another $1,500, it doesn't take care of it. Doesn't, you know, this thing keeps going, and what we all find, we've all had used vehicles, is at some point in time, it's not worth the continuing investment to try to make it roadworthy, safe and reliable, and function as it's supposed to, and we replace it. So I'm telling you that I think we are there on this vehicle and that that's how we've come to a recommendation for replacement. We also have, in your book, from an asset management standpoint, that we also look at these things for replacement, not just a mechanic down the road's opinion. And so that's in there as well. It's scored due to the variety of conditions we look at. We have a single assessment that we do right on the important to critical threshold for replacement as well. And that's still something that you're looking at six to eight months before it's going to be replaced anyhow. So it's, you know, we're trying to look out. So I think we're at a point. So I guess maybe some direction on how much more money do we spend on a vehicle that's worth $1,000 before we decide that we're just investing in something that is...
Madam Mayor.
So I will just say that the conversation's good to have, and maybe we look at the form and say, if it rates a good, what are some of the additional considerations that landed it on the replacement list? So that you're not just looking at the evaluation sheet from the mechanic saying, okay, if it's good, how does it land there? I think Dale, you had some very good points in, and those are the conversations that, yeah, we are privy to that you haven't heard. So if we can capture those comments, we'll look at this policy and if council wants... So if we can capture those comments, we'll look at this policy and if council wants to make any tweaks later this fall, we can improve what we have in those evaluations on the automobiles or trucks, equipments that are being replaced that were rated as good, what the additional conversation was had, I think it's very valid. And as Todd had stated, part of the consideration when it's rated good has been what have we been spending and what is still yet anticipated that lends to the director's discretion of keeping it on there, that has actually weathered the scrutiny of finance and the mayor as well. So, there are a couple of touch points as well, that those continue to land on it. Because otherwise you're kicking the can down the road and next year we'll have the discussion, as Dale stated, not just the extra $1,500, but potentially more, that we think, why did we do that when we should have just gotten rid of it?
Madam Mayor.
We all had lemons, right? Yes, Miss Lynn.
Sorry. I've got a question for Dale and a, and just a general comment about the motion, but is it fair to assume that if we approve this vehicle replacement, we won't be spending the $1,500 in the meantime to keep it running? Or are we going to be doing that repair anyway?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mylum, I think our intention is, is that we would do what's minimally necessary to maintain a safe, roadworthy vehicle for its intended purpose and no more.
Madam Mayor.
It's a fair question. We're not going to spend any money on it unless we have.
And I comment to the, to the motion, I think we definitely should reevaluate the valuation, the evaluation form, that age of the vehicle alone should not be equal to mechanical operation of the vehicle. Had this not been an emergency response vehicle, I would be voting to remove this from the budget. But based on Dale's testimony, as far as the, it isn't an emergency response, it's not easy to just go rent another vehicle if it breaks down because of the equipment, then I'm in favor of leaving it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
No.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
No.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Horton.
No.
Okay, motion failed. So, anything further for Liz Waterman? Okay, Jenny.
Okay, that concludes our enterprise fund. And now move to the development, community development fund.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
So, when does streetlight?
General.
General fund.
Okay, cool.
With that, community development fund, where we'll start off with our building services department. Any questions on our building services department?
There was, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kim.
There was a question, I think posed in this packet from Councilmember Palmer, about a budget item that would be addressed, I think by Mr. Freckleton.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, and I apologize, last week was the worst week to get questions, because it was Fourth of July week and many of our staff members were gone. And Cameron, we appreciate you spending your vacation trying to answer questions. This was one that you couldn't do. Hopefully you've had a chance to meet up with Mr. Freckleton.
Yes, Madam Mayor, appreciate the comment. Yeah, it was, it was fun, good stuff, good questions, appreciate it. So yeah, let me just fill this in, I did connect with Bruce, and I'll just read directly from this, because it is a good question, it actually informed me as well. You know, the question had to do, deal with per diem and why was there, you know, basically a set rate, even though there may be different, you know, differences in location or personnel. So, the response is, is per diem rates vary depending on the location of the trainings that are being held. And by policy, the city uses the federal rates established by the GSA. So those are, and I can, I can send that to you all, you know, where those are coming from. The $76 per day is the number we use for budgeting purposes, however, the actual amount will be established by the finance department at the time that the travel and the destination are determined. And so just to kind of give you some examples of some recent ones, you know, we have a recent one here at Salt Lake that was $56. Portland was a recent one that was $66. Seattle was $76. And so we, we do our best to budget for what may occur, but it's going to be based on the GSA rates, and then, you know, basically when that's, the travel request is submitted, finance will help us determine exactly what that will be. So for budgeting purposes, we try to be on the, you know, conservative side, but it's based on, you know, the actual, when we actually submit it. Hopefully that helps out.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
So, where it says two days or five days, it doesn't necessarily mean two days or five days? Or, if the numbers are right, then that's fine, I just, for the purposes of setting a budget, I just wanted to make sure that the numbers are accurate and weren't just accidental dragging of that little corner square that copies and paste sells, whatever.
Right, yeah, so we, we have, sometimes we don't know exactly how long those trainings or visits may be. And so again, for budgeting purposes, we're just trying to make sure we, we cover what may be the case for these travel requests.
Okay, if they're good, then that's good.
Good question.
Any other questions in the building department?
All right, economic development?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
So, when I had asked the question, where did I put it? Is the mayor's split office system being utilized 50% of the time by community development or economic development? The answer, as responded, was we are considering greater efficiency in utilizing this position in our newly revamped ED division. So that wasn't an answer. I'm just curious, is it current, I know that we're setting a budget for next year, but I like to try to base things on what we actually do, and the entire time I've been here, I've never really been able to figure out if ED is actually utilizing 50% or any percent of the, half the position that they're paying for. In fact, it was like a year into, actually no, I take that back, it was several months into Mr. Ray was taking over the position, they even realized, or even knew that that, that his department was partially funding a position upstairs. So is, is that position being utilized at all? Plan on possibly making a change? Do we need to make the change in the budget?
That certainly has been an item of discussion. I do know that Robert and Cameron and Brenda met frequently to talk about duties to be performed by the halftime position. And they did downtown work, they did database, and they did website and social media stuff. I think it's been underutilized, but not because they didn't have time, they didn't have the direction. So, it's, it will be revamped again as a new person administrator comes in, and we hope that it's fully utilized. It's designed for that. So I, I think at this point, the staffing is adequate that we know of, until we get a person in there to evaluate, it's hard to say.
Madam Mayor, does, I assume the person would, you know, sit around twiddling their thumbs for the underutilized portion of their percentage of time for economic development, do you feel like your office needs additional?
No.
Budgeted staff time?
So, Madam Mayor, maybe from council, if that's the case, if the position is currently being underutilized, we're seeking a new economic development director, the mayor doesn't need additional staffing resources, then to me, it's removing that position from the economic development department. Once we hire a new administrator, if it turns out that the workload requires a part-time assistant, bring that back as a, as a budget amendment for the council to consider at that point in time. I guess I'd feel much differently if, if the mayor's office felt like that this, they needed the resource. That would make sense that we're utilizing that resource while it's being underutilized in the economic development department.
Well, that's an interesting discussion. At this point, that, that is a full-time FTE that is split and it's funding, so it's not as easy as saying we remove half a position when it's a full-time position. That position has been utilized in an economic development form, short of being advice from the economic development administrator in terms of business visits and downtown participation and their redevelopment efforts and building our business community in downtown. So the, the gap was filled, but it was not filled under the administrator's direction. So, and that is a conversation that Cameron and I have had, as I believe it should be. But economic development is an important aspect to the city, and so it's not to say that work was not being done, just not done under the direct, direct supervision of the economic development person.
So, Madam Mayor, appreciate that additional information. I guess just clarification then, this position is being underutilized or is not being underutilized?
It's being underutilized to the ED who should be directing the work, and, and so, but the work is being done.
Madam Mayor, if I might, just to, to kind of add some clarification as well, so as many of you know, we've been without a economic development administrator for a few months now. We're hopeful to have that position hired. We're going to start phone interviews this week and hope to have that hired here as soon as possible. We really do, through some extensive researches that I've done, and to, you know, the earlier point of, okay, what, what do we want ED to be in Meridian going forward in the future? And how is it best administered? You know, a lot of great feedback, I've reviewed a lot of other cities, municipalities on how they do ED effectively. And, you know, it's, it's critical that, well, to, straight to the question, this halftime FTE is vital for the, a community of our size with economic development that is occurring, it would, it's, it's, it's unwieldy for me currently with my current responsibilities to try to pick that up. And then to actually do it at a premier level, it's, it's going to require not only the ED administrator, but certainly this halftime and potentially even more in the future to do it well and do it to the level that we would like to see it done. So, based on, on that, I, you know, I appreciate the comments, I appreciate, you know, the council's consideration of this, and also just the conversations I've had with the mayor on this point. ED is, is the, the lifeblood of our community, and we want to make sure that we support it to continue to have that vibrancy in our, in our community. So, hopefully that helps add a little bit of color on the vision for this revamped ED division going forward.
Madam Mayor, I'm not sure anybody on council's suggesting that economic development isn't important, it isn't lifeblood. In fact, I think we want to make sure that that department has the necessary resources, assets and, and tools. For me, it, it speaks to trying to look at it from an average taxpayer's standpoint in the age of really embracing transparency. We've got lots of positions that are housed in the mayor's office that are scattered in different budget items. And I think it's important that if we've got staff that are doing work in the mayor's office, let's just, let's just communicate that to our public, that these are where these staff are positioned, this is what the budget's associated with. And if the person isn't working in economic development right now, and again, maybe you're, maybe you're going to need a full-time position. Again, our hope is that you and your team are doing such great work that you're going to say, this really needs to be a full-time position, that we're, we're setting that person up for success. And I just, I've always struggled, I think every year at the budget, we've talked about this, about how I don't understand it. When I worked here, I didn't understand it. As a council member, I don't understand it. And I think that if we're going to have staff that are doing work out of the mayor's office, let's just put them in the mayor's office budget and, and communicate that appropriately to the public, that's all.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I think, I agree that now or future, that the position makes sense as a full-time position.
It's, it's in the CFP.
And so I, I wouldn't even be opposed to make that a full-time position now and providing a halftime position for the mayor's office. If it's not needed, it's a full-time position, and that provides the clarification and the now and future needs of ED. It may sound strange coming from me that I want to spend more money on something, but I think that the ROI is certainly there in ED, and there's obviously the need on the third floor for the, to maintain a halftime position. That would ensure that there'd be no more confusion as to, at least for me, as to what the person's doing, where they're at, and who's the boss. And it would give you the part-time position with the full concentration of an effort of that person's time there.
Okay, any further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Laura.
Madam Mayor, I agree with Councilman Palmer, I can definitely see us needing two, maybe even a minimum of two, is full-time economic development with all the growth that's occurring and following up, and just knowing how busy that office can be when it's ramping up and acting in the full capacity that it should. And so maybe that is something we should consider to go ahead and fund that second position as a full-time position and leaving a halftime position in the mayor's office if you're feeling like you are at necessary capacity for staff.
It's always an interesting discussion when council's trying to give you more positions than you think is needed.
Madam Mayor.
And, and certainly it's an operational thing. I, I would hate to make decisions for a new ED and a new mayor that should be making those decisions themselves. And so at this point, I, I would, if you guys want to do a new FTE, that's certainly up to you, but it would, the current status quo would continue until the end of the year at, at this pace anyway. I, I think it is important to, we have each of our departments justify FTEs. At this point, it's not justified. And I'd love to say, well, you know, in my magic ball, it will be, but I think you need to have a new ED, you need to have a new mayor, that hopefully economic development is a priority and a focus, and, and at that point, they'll be bringing something back to council, I'm sure. Maybe in, in the midterm or at the next budget year, but, so.
Madam Mayor. I, I mean... Madam Mayor, I mean, I think right now, we're maybe five or three or four years ago, we weren't necessarily in a position as a city where we had so much potential, ready-to-go, commercial space, but with 10-mile, Highway 16, we're now moving west of future Highway 16. There's so much more ground opened up and available for, I think, low-hanging fruit of commercial recruitment, that if there ever was a time to ensure that that position's adequately, or that portion of our city effort is adequately staffed, I think now is that time. You talk about, hopefully, we have a future mayor with economic development-minded. We've got two, possibly three, in the room, fairly confident or lean that way, and I know a guy who is the fourth one, for sure he leans that way and understanding the importance of that as well. Sure others may get in that may want to just stop everything, but I feel confident that anyone that's going to be filling that position in the future has a good understanding of its value in the city. So, I think if there ever was a time, it's now, fill it, and if you hear down the road, it was like, well, that was dumb, it can always be undone, and it's only, in reality, it's only adding a halftime position.
I'm out.
Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
For council, let me make sure that I'm hearing things right. I think there was discussion of eliminating a halftime position at ED, and it sounds like that's not supported by the executive branch. Then there was then suggestion to give ED a full-time position, also not supported by the executive branch, who ultimately drive this. The only option that I hear is supported is status quo. So, council, we're happy to make a motion, but if there's not that collaboration with both chambers, which doesn't seem like it's the path to head down.
Madam Mayor.
And just.
Sure, go ahead.
I think it's important that the new mayor sets that direction, and that, I think the first step to that is developing a plan, and then you know why you're having a position. It doesn't make sense to approve a position without a plan and without a description and duties and anticipation of what they need. And so, the new mayor would have, and the new administrator would have tools at their availability to bring that justification to council at this time, to approve a position before you even know what that is and what they would do and how it would function and what the plan is, is the cart before the horse. I do think that this council is dedicated to economic development, as is the current mayor, and I know that the future candidates see that importance as well, that it should be to a plan, and it should be strategic, and it should make sense. So, I would entertain whatever you would like to do, but I think until a new person's on board, and it goes through the typical process of defining what it is, what it would do, justifying that it's a full-time position, it is the cart before the horse. Mr. Gordon.
Madam Mayor, to add in to the options, you guys were talking about getting the collaborative approach, and I think we can take this time to allow the new mayor, the new development director, or economic development team member, to collaborate with everybody, make sure we have everything in place when you do a budget amendment at some point in time. Let us discuss with you guys, give you the plan, March, February, next year, go, this is our plan, what do you like, what do you don't like? And then if you feel that we need to expedite the staffing, we have a budget amendment process just for that opportunity. Making a decision today without having a good dialogue with your future director, even with you guys, I think would be the less informed, the less collaborative approach that you're talking about. I think the collaborative approach is bring in the new team member, work with you guys, develop a plan, and if we need to get it done before October 1 next year, we have an opportunity for you guys to do that. Just want to offer that budget amendment to meet your needs, but I think I like where you're going to look, let's get the collaborative approach to it, let's discuss it before we just start putting things into a budget, and we have the tools of that, we'll allow you guys to do that. Just want to give you that budget amendment process opportunity.
Madam Mayor, and before I even mentioned it, Cameron had said potential full-time. I, I mean, if it's not needed, don't hire it. I don't know, I guess we still have the position, so either if it's funded full-time, you're not going to hire it part-time, I assume that's probably how that works. But, no, I, I'm ready to fund it. I hate budget amendments that come before the budget's in place for October.
Do you hate that more than approving something before you even know it's justified? That seems odd, but.
Madam Mayor, again, that, Cameron, I put you on the spot here, do you feel that, especially once we do have a new EDA, that there is sufficient meaningful work that could be done by a full-time assistant there?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Palmer.
Cameron, I don't think you have to answer that. That puts you on the spot, and till we have that position filled, it's a premature discussion.
Madam Mayor, it is a budget discussion, so I move we make that position full-time with, within community development, and ensure that the halftime position still exists, solely dedicated to that within your office.
I have a motion.
Let it stay in the way it is.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Laura Roberts.
Normally, I would second that, but I think through the discussion, we've made it pretty clear that we need to get the economic development person in place and vet it out completely, but I think that it's great that it's on the record that there is support for a growing and thriving economic development department, and that when the time is right, that issue can be addressed. But that, the new person, the director administrator, needs to have full buy-in on that position.
I appreciate your support. It's very valuable, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Danny?
Okay. Looks like we're.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kim.
I'm not quite wrapped up with economic development. I assume we're done with the conversation about Councilmember Palmer's question, but it's, I don't want to step on anyone's toes, but I just have a question about the IA MC. First off, Cameron's staff, apologies for you guys having to work on your vacation, that's important. No, this new process, I think, had some unintended consequences that council put off some of their comments, till maybe a week out, failing to recognize that many staff would be out enjoying the Fourth of July with their holidays and should not be plugged into Wi-Fi to answer questions. So, my apologies, appreciate the response that you sent. I was hoping just to get a little bit more understanding about it, how long we've been a member. To me, if this is something that we've got demonstrable wins and we're looking for to grow our investment, I'm open to that. Traditionally, I've been really opposed to sponsorships. I just don't think it's a good use of taxpayer dollars, but I'm always open to that conversation if you're able to kind of show us why spending, I think it's, is it $10,000 or $20,000? Thank you. I can't see from there, my eyes are terrible. But why, why we're going to push for that $10,000 spend, especially just, again, as the layman, who's not the subject matter expert, if we've already got an investment with BVIP, it seems like they're going to be there in a much more meaningful manner if we're able to leverage those existing relationships and save our taxpayers some dollars.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Cameron, appreciate the question.
Oh, thank you, appreciate the question, Madam Mayor and Councilman Kavner. The IAMA is a pretty amazing group. This is your site selector international who's who organization. This is a one-time sponsorship, it is not a membership that we're actively engaged in, it is fairly expensive to do so, but this is really kind of one of those Blue Moon events as far as ED goes, where the conference is actually going to be in our valley. And so, from that perspective, it's, it would be very strange, if not, you know, it would be a missed opportunity, to say the least, if we were not participatory in the event. Also, to your question, you know, why the $10,000 gold sponsorship level, BVIP is a sponsor as well as Boise and NAPA at a $20,000 level, that's a significant commitment, and we felt like the gold sponsorship, the $10,000 level was where we felt we'd get the most benefit, meaning a seat at the table, also, you know, face-to-face conversations with the site selectors, as well as, you know, just involvement in the conference, as opposed to a lower tier where we just don't get maybe that bang for the buck. So, we felt like this was the appropriate level to sponsor. We know that even smaller communities are at this level. I have good information that Kuna is at the $5,000 level, so that just gives you some understanding of maybe where some of our partners are viewing this. But, again, just a critical and a great opportunity for us to really show our community off, and, again, start to garner some of those relationships and pull in some of those wins.
Madam Mayor. Cameron, couldn't we achieve a lot of it though, just by attending rather than sponsoring? And again, a lot of it has to, and I know there's some council members that are really supportive of this, and so I don't want to belabor the point, I just, if we can achieve the same outcomes by, again, deploying our great staff in a meaningful way, as opposed to paying money, just, again, my perception, because I'm not the expert, of having our name attached to an event, shown on a wall, recognized at the event, I just, those are hard dollars, and it's hard for me to wrap my head around to say it's a good use of those.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Kavner, so if we do not sponsor at the $10,000 level, we don't get that one-on-one time, which I feel, and, you know, in agreement with the mayor, is really that critical with these site selectors. Otherwise, it's just kind of, we're there and there's no, you know, real interaction with them. I mean, to be quite frank, it's just, we're there, and it's not an interactive thing at all. So, this is, this gets us that access, it also gets us that, those networking opportunities that really are some of the meaningful purposes of the event. So, I understand your question, and I agree, we don't want to spend money that we could get the value otherwise, but without it, we, I see it as, again, a lost opportunity.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Laura Roberts.
Madam Mayor, Cameron, I'm wondering, is there, did we do the formula thing on the enhancement form, because I know it's a one-time request, but it looks like what has happened is that it's pulled at Clear Cross, and so that's why when I had a chance to chat with you on Thursday, so I'm wondering if that's creating some issues, because then it goes Clear Cross to $50,000.
Yeah, it's a one-time.
Yeah, great catch.
Because that's why I was confused if this was our BVIP dues versus the one-time, and I am very supportive of us participating. I think the community as a whole has raised, had to raise $150,000 just to get this conference to come here. It is a very, very sought-after conference, and I think that we need to be part of the team, not outside, so I am very supportive of the $10,000.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Laura Roberts, let me clarify just a little bit. On the one-time versus ongoing, there was an error, a data error, entry error on our part. It is captured as an ongoing on-year form. My apologies, it should be a one-time.
And I would agree, Councilman Kavner, we have not done sponsorships. This one had an unusual opportunity to get in front of a group that we typically don't have that opportunity. I think through the sponsorship, you'll have that chance of highlighting your community in a unique and different way than would otherwise be presented. I believe that it also allows a certain number of attendees to the conference as well. So, there's multiple benefits to doing that. Okay, further questions?
No questions. Again, it's not something that I would support holding. I think there's support from the council to continue on. Keith Bird rule, we can continue on, appreciate the discussion about it. So, I'm on the record with my opposition, I'm willing to continue.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, Mr. Palmer, I'm sorry.
I also have it in my, you know, ties ideal budget removal list. Wasn't going to make a big argument about it, because that never works for me, but it's there, so I'm on record as well, like, flip. Anybody else?
Madam Mayor, unless, unless, does anyone else wants to comment? I'm happy to move on to the next, my next question. It just was about the industry consultant, so I think we have it budgeted as an amendment for this fiscal year, that's being brought as an amendment for next fiscal year. I think some of your, maybe I didn't quite understand your response in the packet versus it also still being as a in-process budget amendment for this year. Should tell me, understand what's going on with that, is it intended that we're not going to spend those dollars this year, which is why you're bringing it forth as another budget request for fiscal year 2020? That's my assumption, but I couldn't quite understand based on the response I received.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Kavner, so this money has not been spent, and it's largely because we want to get our economic development administrator on board so that they can go through the process of hiring the consultant, but then also being participatory in the analysis. We felt like if we were to just kind of go ahead without that position being filled and having, you know, a consultant do it, we wouldn't be getting the benefit of a lot of the work and the analysis itself that could be gained. And so, as it stands, again, we hope to be hiring that position here in the next month or so, and then kicking it off this fiscal year, but there is the potential that it could carry, and so that's kind of where we are with it in the process.
So, Madam Mayor, Cameron, I think that.
Yeah, so Cameron, is, just to maybe, is it a carry forward or is it a new request? Right, that's your question, right?
Essentially, yes.
Oh, I see.
But if we're doing it now, if we are going to do it now, then why is it coming forth as a secondary budget request? And if it's, I think what Cameron's talking about is what I think is appropriate, based on some of our previous comments about, we want to wait till we have a new director, well, then let's pull this from the budget request, let's get that new person hired, let them bring forth a budget amendment, and go from there.
Yeah, is this already budgeted? And if it is, is it just a carry forward, or is this on top of what is already budgeted?
Thank you, thank you for the clarification. So, it already is budgeted, and so it would be just carried forward, again, once we have the economic development.
So, it doesn't need to be in the budget?
Sorry, that's me, my paper, sorry.
So, it's just a carry forward?
Yes.
We're removing it?
Remove that, yeah.
Do you need any action, or, I guess you're the executive, you can just.
I think you can just.
Great.
Draw a line, unless it's in addition to what you already have approved.
It's my understanding that it's already. It's, it's my understanding that it's already in the existing 19 budget. So, we'd be requesting to carry it forward.
Not starting $20,000 or.
Good job. There you go.
That, that concludes my questions on economic development.
Any further in economic development? Jenny, I'll turn this over to you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have reduced economic developments. Wrong column. Ongoing budget by 25,000. And I'll make sure that it is in our, captured in our carry forward for fiscal year 19 carry. Okay, with that, we are going to move into planning if there's no other economic development questions. Any questions for planning? Okay, I hear none. Let's move to community development admin division. Are there any questions, community development admin division? Okay, I hear none. That, oh.
Slow down.
Sorry.
Maybe. I put the word admin too many times in my notes, so I can't just search it. Okay, never mind, I'm good.
Okay, we're good there. Okay. Includes our community development service. We're going to move into general fund.
Yeah, at this point, I will call a 10-minute recess and give you a chance to refresh drinks, go down the hall or do whatever you need to do. Okay, thank you. Well, reconvene at 11:00.
Yeah.
When do we have to publish?
Sorry, Cameron? Well, sorry, you.
So, we can talk about these amounts and then, hey, Crystal.
Nice to come join us.
When are we bringing this?
I didn't think you would.
Okay, you were. As I would reread the question, I'd be like, okay, this sounds like Ty. This needs to sound like I'm actually feeling in the moment, like I just don't know.
I know, but we, we said before we haven't published the.
Like with the mother. I, I just, I just, I'm a dude, I'm an ignorant. And then the answer was like, sweet, makes perfect sense.
Fact that it's federally required too.
That was, yeah, eye-opening.
I thought that was.
Well, yeah, I don't know.
I didn't know that either.
Do we have one here?
I don't have the scope of that rule. Hey, citizen. Thanks for coming. We're doing a drawing for all those who attend. Did you get a raffle ticket? We should do.
Whoever's name is drawn is the next mayor.
Actually. No, we should have like a little, like a door prize or something. We can all donate stuff, call your name. Get a, get a camp chair. Actually.
Dude, I love it.
Be kind of fun.
Yeah.
How do you cover it? Good seats.
Hey, reserve seating. Might give you a property? We have those out?
Ah, you're ruining.
So, we need to have it to council by.
It does make it kind of interesting to have a.
Yeah, as I was sending emails, like I'm getting vacation. You know, this is back and I'm just like, uh-oh, I waited too long. To be fair, Jenny's email said.
Oh, I, yeah.
Whatever day it said, I at least sent them that night. So, some of them were the next day, but it was before like 4:00 AM, so, but that's the same day. I started those emails when the sun was up. I saw the sun off the screen.
Hey, seems like a great weekend. You're in Ross. No, last weekend, it's from the. Stop by. And straight fireworks. Good, good. It was so nice of so many other residents living around the area to provide supplemental fireworks. Holy cow.
348 is what you have in one time.
There was a few and some pretty big fireworks.
That's an evening, huge weekend. Oh, Steve, that's great.
So, gun adder, your baby, uh, on Saturday morning.
He's, uh, two ounces and eight pounds.
There's a good shot of him. Emirates.
Emirates, oh. Steve, that's awesome.
Chills down there.
Good, good. That's fantastic. Okay, let's keep going. I got a VRT meeting I'm supposed to be at. I'm not making the VRT meeting. Okay, Ty, I know you keep track of where I am for my meetings. I will not be at the VRT meeting today. You're not going to be done.
Exactly.
Good, how are you doing?
Good. Yeah, but.
Oh, it's reduced.
So, we needed $2,000.
How are you?
Control down there, individual questions.
Do you have a specific question that you'd like to prepare for?
Oh, I just want to double it.
You want to double?
Yeah.
We got a list of projects.
I figure you do. Yeah, I want to. I mean, it won't happen, but I would like to. I think every single one of those that goes up is worth 10 times what it costs to do it.
We're going to get a, Idaho Power has submitted rate schedule changes to the PUC that would go into effect in four years. That takes our own lights, that they are paying maintenance and power for, dumping them back on. So, in about four years, we're going to, we're going to realize additional maintenance costs on them. Hopefully by then, those will be converted to LED.
There's ones that they're paying for?
We own them, they pay maintenance and power. And they're getting rid of those.
What's the situations where those exist?
Just legacy.
Oh, yeah.
2,700 lights are on that schedule rate effect. So, we're paying for the maintenance and we're paying for the power. And they're getting out of the maintenance business on somebody else's.